Nations being made to Bennington Elementary School. Thank you Glenn. Thank you Sandy. We have a first and a second, any discussion on that?
It comes in annually from uh it's a. I think it's Bruce. So it's it's an annual payment that comes in just for Benals in general. They get to do with it whatever they care.
How does that work? I mean, can pound apply to any of these grants that go to?
It's not.
It's like a bequeath.
He's been doing it for years. He always independent board since if Benow is his own Bennington district.
Yeah, I know and we, you know, we frequently run into individuals or organizations who for one reason or another want to make a specific donation to a specific school. We've, we've never said no to those.
You, I wouldn't want you to say no, but I'm just, just in the, the time that I've come back, I've never seen any. Of it ever be donated to pound on. My understanding is at Act forty six as well.
So we're one district for sure. I think the notion is for, for money to go to a specific building. I, I, I've never spoken to the, the trustees of this, of this annual grant that comes, not grant, this annual bequest bequevement. So I, I don't know sort of what the origins are or what the intent is other than they have specifically identified the school.
There is Williams, like Williams College.
I was just gonna say every year we get a donation, Powell gets a donation from Williams that's. A significant even more than this that is yearly that just comes to pound. We do, we do get, we do have an advantage of that as well.
And Renee. Don't trust your mother, she has a broken shoulder. Like this, can you believe that? Anyway, anyway. So we, we had an issue with the posting. So the, the official warning that went out named the start time at five o'clock. It was posted on the website as starting at five thirty. We had discussed five thirty, but because it was warned at five. As soon as we had quorum after five, we needed to kick it up. So you haven't missed anything. Except the approval of the consent agenda and we moved some things around. So, so we're in good shape.
There's a public comment towards the end. So. Probably my show at five thirty.
So, and I would just say for any board member, uh, there's always an online option to, to utilize if. They find parts of their body broken, for instance, so.
It's gonna be broken for a while.
So yeah, so, so there we have it with in terms of the, um, the donation. So any other discussion on approving. Uh, on accepting rather the donation to Bennington Elementary School. Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the donations, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. I would also ask for a motion, please, to authorize our clerk to send a letter of thanks to the, the trustees. Anyone hope to?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you Glenn. Anyone else? Thank you Sandy. First and second, uh, any discussion on that? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of, uh, authorizing our clerk to send a thank you note, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? There we go. All right, uh, Sandy, uh, would you please share your question with the rest of the board regarding the tractor bid?
Well, it has tractor bid except report. And it has a date dated back from September, so I don't know whether we approve to send this out. And you're coming back to give us some of the proposals or if you're asking to. For a motion to look into it. So there was a little bit of.
Sure, thank you. So, um, this time last year, we put it in our, in our budget request. Went through all the budgets got approved. Uh, we put out an RFP and the newspaper and individually asked companies to provide pricing. Um, for a specifically sized tractor. We have gotten those boats back. Um, and the recommendation, my apologies if the dates are.
I don't have any recommendation. I don't have.
And do you want to pass those out? It didn't make it into the packet. The, the invitation is there, but the actual summary and recommendations.
So, uh, while you're looking at that, I'm happy to talk about the tractor and what we use it for. Um, the existing tractor is about twenty years old. Um, it, it last summer when we were spraying woodchips, it broke on a pretty regular basis. Um, it's held together a little bit by duct tape and bubble gum. And some of the things we've been working on in the elementary district specifically is having. Our guys get training and having our guys perform a lot of the grounds work instead of subcontracting it out. Um, so some of the things we use the tractor for is, uh, loading and unloading of salt, load materials, deliveries that come. Um, to either the Malice dark shop to get distributed or. Uh, other buildings district wide, uh, we in. We unboxed, uh, and took a delivery of a whole bunch of books in Hammond Beach Street, that kind of thing. Um, all the digging and repairs to playground equipment like the Woodford Playground. Uh, the installation of the woodchips, uh, was all our in-house staff with the tractor. Uh, we stump and grub, uh, remote brush. We've been planting trees and shrubs, uh, drainage for utilities and in the winter we use it for moving back snowbanks. So, uh, the existing tractor has used its live, lived its useful life and, um. We'll have to get praising on the tractor we would like and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So why do we need a backhoe? What is it specifically that you need a backhoe for that you don't use a bucket loader for?
Sure, and I, I would defer to the director of the elementary district, um, on what specifically for our schools they use them for. Trenching of utilities comes to mind.
Trench it, does that happen that we don't hire a contractor out that would handle that?
It, it depends on the scope of work. There's some kind of basic daylighting we can do. Um, basic ready of conduit, uh, when it gets to the bigger projects, like clearly we wouldn't be doing that. You know, without, uh, contacting with the right sized equipment. Uh, though, for example, um, one of the things we use the tractor for was the updreading land owner at Monument. That hedgerow, we cleaned all that hedgerow up. There was a old metal fence that we use the tractor to pull out. Um, and clean up that brunt, uh, brush to be good neighbors. We also used it to spread and pound all, um, the, uh. Baseball field, I get baseball and softball. I forget which one it is. Kickball, thank you. Kickball. We re, uh, laid out the field last spring. And we clayed everything, so it's actually the right dimensions and it's well drained. And so those are some of the things. We use it for, but does that answer your questions?
It absolutely does for the bucket loader, absolutely, but certainly not for the backhoe. Now for the bucket loader, because you can do that, all those tasks if you're good with a bucket, with a bucket. And well, the other piece that I have is that we had that old tractor for twenty some odd years. And it only has fifteen hundred hours on it, which gives you about six hours a month. And that's really not, this is a big purchase for such a little amount of time. And then my second question is how are we moving it from point A to point B? Because if it's a farm tractor going from farmland to farmland, the farmer can move it. If it's a farm tractor that's used for commercial or for non-farm use, it's different. Criteria is different for being on the road.
Right, and I, I, I'm sorry saying they don't have specifics. I can certainly get them, come back to you with it.
Welcome to come in. We'll probably make two or three announcements as people come in. We'll public comment towards the end.
Is this a meeting?
It is.
Yeah, okay.
It was warned at five, so we started at five. We moved public comment to the end. So we just done.
So just to, so I, I can't speak to what the tractor was used for before I started. Um, I've only been here for three years, so I, I, I don't know how many hours it ran for. I don't know if we used it for, I would surmise that you did similar things. But I can tell you some of the repairs over the last year, the brakes have, have gone out a number of times. The lifting capacity is under two thousand, um, we would like to have the tractor that can move four thousand. To manually unload materials. When we move the tractor back and forth, uh, there, we have a flatbed. And the dump trucks, I know we've done it before. I don't know.
Cause this is a good size.
Um, technically the director of the elementary district does have a C D L, so I would assume that he's the one driving it.
Did I, did I answer your question? Turf tires or ag tires?
So I'm gonna, just gonna ask, like, I don't know that this, that, so the, the mechanism for getting a piece of equipment from point A to point B. I'm gonna leave up to people who are experts in the field and I don't know that any of us necessarily qualify as that or would need to know that in order to approve the, the purchase. Ag tires, turf tires, C D L.
It, it doesn't.
I, I, I'm sure, I'm sure it matters, but I, but I'm also certain that the people who are overseeing this, like, know those things and are, are.
Talking in eighty-three or ninety-one thousand dollar piece of equipment that warrants every question that needs to be asked by any board member.
Okay, so let's continue with that. So, and so this is what I would say to that Glenn. So there's the, there's the expenditure for the piece of equipment. And then there's what I will call the minutia of, of micromanaging our professional staff and how they're going to get a piece of equipment from point A to point B. And I do see those two things as being separate, separate matters.
But I think if we get a, uh, you know, sixty horsepower tractor needing a trailer for, that should be a size truck.
So fair enough, but I guess I would also say when, when we order other supplies and other pieces of equipment, I don't ever recall us figuring out. How they're gonna get some manufacturer to us.
Under forty thousand dollars, then it's not the requirement, if I understand Renee correctly. To have this board's group need, but over forty thousand dollars it is.
Sure. And I suppose what I, what I was specifically thinking of was when we all sign off on the warrants each month, like we review. All of the expenditures and we sign off on that warrant and never once have we.
Just in comparison and MAU, we, we beat a, beat a van purchase to death.
Great, that sounds like a very efficient.
Everybody got their questions answered. Great, okay, so fire it away. So for the purposes, kid, is it all right if board members ask any and all question that they would consider? And we come back, the next meeting is the ninth, so not that far off, we come back with answers. It can very well be done. I don't know. But I want to make sure everybody's questions get asked.
And the other part of this, Chris, is that I specifically asked before this meeting for these questions. And you can specifically stated that I have a lot of questions and I am very familiar with tractors.
I, I believe it's Sandy, great. I, I just see them as being separate from expenditure versus how we get it here. How we get it here is not part of the action we're being asked to do tonight. That, that was the point of delineation that I was bringing up.
I don't want to kill it any further. That, that's not there. Are you done with yours?
I cannot possibly consider going forward with a, what we don't have.
I'm sorry, I don't know about, tough my head, I'm happy to.
We're gonna want to know that because that's, I've got a sixty horse of them not let four thousand cows. So if yours is going to, I, I want to see it. First stars, um, second, how many implements come with it?
Um, again, I, uh, worked with the director of the elementary district. We developed an RFP. And he drilled down on all those details. I don't know on my head, but I'm happy to give them to you.
Given we shot time for, till the next meeting for December ninth, uh, would you be okay if we just table that to then and we're all?
Yeah, and, um, we can certainly get you a copy of the RFP. It was in the banner with all the detail.
You share that, you actually.
It's a respondents and considerable amount of money.
And, and I certainly understand going to a, a full-size cab from a Curtis. I get that because if you're gonna use it in the winter, you really do want. A nicer cab. So I get that. I even understand the twenty years. It's just the fact that it only has fifteen hundred hours on it. Just, it's just minimal.
So I need someone please to make a motion to table this. We'll give this one to Sid, she was right there. Uh, and, and, and with a, with a motion to table, we just have it there. So, so we will flip this off and we'll pick this back up, uh, at our December meeting. And, you know, uh, Superintendent Payne, Director Anderson, I don't know if it makes more sense for, um, Mr. Sclary to also be present to answer some of those questions, but. Leave it up to folks who.
I would suggest it.
Okay, great. Uh, so moving on, so there are fewer people in the room, so we'll say it again. So there was a, uh, a discrepancy in, in how this was posted. At our start time. Um, the, the formal official legal warning warned this for a five o'clock start time. It was posted on our website, however, to start at five thirty. What we've done to both honor how it was, how it was, um, warned. And to make sure that people who are gonna come out, don't lose their opportunity is that we modify the agenda to move public comments to the second to last item on our agenda tonight. So we'll move through our business, uh, people will get here when they get here and we'll hold public comment the way that we typically do. So, um, that brings us to, uh, I haven't, we got off the topic. Has the treasurer's report been published? And posted, I just don't recall.
It came in, but it did not get posted.
Okay, so we can, we can resume that in December then. Um, so that pulls us to, um, the first of two agenda items numbered at number five. So policies, there's nothing from the policy committee, um, but we, there was a question regarding all representation to the policy committee. So at one of our more recent meetings. Chair rescinded the appointment of Sandy to the policy committee. The question was then raised is whether or not via Robert's rules of order, the board has the opportunity to overturn that decision. So we turned it over to the attorney and this is what Dina had to say. And I can, um, what I'll do is submit this for the record to be included probably. In the next round of, of board packet, uh, that stated November eighteenth, it's from Dina, it says this. Chris, I have agreed with Robert's rules of orders and Robert's rules of order in response to the question of whether or not your fellow board members can override your decision. To remove a board member from an appointment made solely by the chair. They cannot. The power to appoint, if held solely by the chair, cannot be delegated to or overridden by the board. Quote, if appointment was by the presiding act, oh, the, the president acting alone. He may remove or replace committee members by his own act. And the citation for that is. Five zero colon one four, Robert's rules of order, the twenty twenty edition, which is the revised twelfth edition. What can be done theoretically is that there can be a modification by the boards, plural. To have the members from all of the boards be nominated then. But that would not be until the appointment of the sitting members is completed reorganization. I'm sorry. Let me say it again, but that would not be until the appointment of the sitting members is completed, reorganization after the annual meeting in March. Since the committee is a committee of all the boards, I believe all need to approve a modification to the bylaws of how a member is appointed to the committee. If a member is nominated and voted to the committee, removal of that member has to be done by a majority vote at the underlying board.
I have a point of order. Um, it also states, and I can't find it here on my cheat sheet, that the Robert's rules. Are to be, uh, accepted while we do our annual reorganization and we did not do that.
Okay, so given.
We haven't officially said that we're using them in any capacity. So we're using them, but we didn't actually. Put them into motion during our March meeting or September meeting.
So, thank you for, for raising that. I guess I would say this, if we are. If we're saying that what the legal, and I'm kind of thinking out loud here. Place doesn't stand because we have never, for, we haven't formally adopted Robert's rules of order as our sort of governance model. Then I would also say that we can't then turn to Robert's rules of order to seek to overturn the chair's decision. Right, it's like that we always use Robert's rules of order, we never use Robert's rules of order. I'm inclined to say for the remainder of this term until we reorganize in March, that we retain the use of Robert's rules of order. That's what I would propose. Again, if we're, if we're using Robert's rules of order, we can just move her ahead. And if we're not using Robert's rules of order, the chair gets to decide. So I don't know how, which way we want to call it necessarily, but we have legal, we have our legal opinion that we asked for, giving us an answer to the question. So.
I think we'd also move based on Robert's rules of order as well, and also move as a group. To make motion to forward those non-agenda as long as it's done by super majority, which is two thirds vote.
To do what?
To appoint somebody. We can make a motion.
Right.
For as a board. I can make a motion, that motion be seconded. Could debate it, then vote on as long as it's passed by two thirds, put the Robert's rule in place.
Except what the lawyer is saying is that this is not a matter of, of motion by the board. It's a matter of what the bylaws for the ASU said. The bylaws for the ASU, yes, the bylaws for the, for the supervisor, you'd say that appointments to committees are done by chair only. What she's suggesting is after the reorganization in March, if people want to, to bring the matter up for a modification of the bylaws in March. Which she's saying every board would have to then approve in order for, I think what you're asking to happen, in order for that to happen.
I mean, why, why I'd like to ask for you, Chris, I'd like to, um, have you reappoint Sandy to the policy committee. Cause I don't have room, I'm sure you don't have room. I think most are tapped out, you know, she understands it to add to me new there, especially trying to get all these policies. Updating for it should, because I'm. And pre-merger still, I might like to just see Sandy do that and try to get through that issue.
Sure, so I would say this, so I, I've approached a member of the board, asked a member if they would serve on the policy committee for, for this board. Um, what they have said is they would like to see how this question places, before they make a decision on my, my request for them to join that policy. So, um, now that we have an answer, now that the answer is on the record, we'll see what that person has to say and then if need be, we can revisit it to move forward. Um, so that's, we're now gonna move into the second agenda number five, which is operations, and I believe probably turn to Director Anderson for that, with Superintendent maybe.
No notes for operations.
Great. I think we're gonna hear from Director Anderson eventually, because here we have agenda item number six, which is the S V U E S D, best educational use of facilities update. So there was a meeting of that, I'm gonna pause remote, we have more people in the room. Let me apologize folks. So we have, uh, this meeting was. Posted for two different start times. So the official legal warning was for five o'clock. Um, so as soon as we had quorum, we needed to start at five o'clock. Also recognizing we had talked about this being five thirty, at least some of you were here last week and we talked about this being five thirty. It was posted on our website as five thirty. So what we did, so as to accommodate folks we anticipated would be coming for public comment. Was to move public comment to the second to last agenda item on the. So, but we'll still call it to cover all the business. We will still have opportunity for public comment. It's just gonna come at a different point in the evening than typically it does. So, now, getting back to the best use, uh, best educational use of our facilities, uh, Director Anderson, do you have an update for us, please?
Uh, turned over to Superintendent Payne.
We did have a meeting. Our next meeting, uh, is, before I forget, is December the ninth. That'll be at five o'clock because that will be backed up against a six o'clock start for the elementary school board on December the ninth. Our past meeting was pretty much just a, a, an update, a review quickly of the building study that's already been in place, including. Options to be considered. Uh, we shared some information with regards to cost per building per student. Uh, and the group seems pretty energized, so much so that they did not want to wait till January and thus. It's scheduled a December meeting to get the work started. My hope coming out of that group is that, um. This board will give directions for a working group to be moving forward so they can respond in a timely fashion. We also have work to do in Act seventy-three, a student services audit is floating out there and policy committee, so. A smaller group that can focus on this work will probably be the ask of this committee.
Any questions, uh, for Superintendent or for Director Anderson? Great, thank you both. Uh, and thanks to our, our reps who sit on that, on that committee as well. Um, so moving on to agenda item seven, the S V S U report, uh, I'll leave it to any of our three reps to give that update, please.
Last week was back to back with MAU best use. And all that, so it's kind of, I'm trying to.
It's like a blur.
See if we can come up with a couple of, um. You have something Jeff?
No, for me, they're all working. Oh, so we started the initial primary looking at the budget with Renee. And so it's just kind of, you know, planning moving forward and what kind of, you know, the start point for the budget.
We did talk about a number of contingencies coming, you know, with the, the proposition coming of Act seventy-three with, um. With best use also being up in the air, you know, and not really knowing where to, to put a point to start the conversation. With, with that many other things.
And, you know, looking at federal funds, so there is a lot of moving pieces, especially this year with the budget. Um, so it could be, it's always been last minute, not knowing what the budget was, but this year it seems more up in the air.
Um, Dr. Abbott gave us a presentation regarding student services and additionally what the implications of Medicaid billing. May, may, may not have in effect of, um. Furthering our budgetary concerns or it's hopefully alleviating them.
Probably get a house night too from her.
Just, just need a little something to get going.
That's, that's okay. Great. Anything else from the, uh, S V S U reps? Okay, um, so let's move on to the next agenda item, which is superintendent's report. So Superintendent Payne, floor is yours.
Just for our consideration of the chair, as we have an audience, um, and two lengthy reports coming, would you entertain? The idea that folks could give their public comment and then move along with their business, unless folks would love to stick around for a budget present.
Some, you're shaking your heads, it's important stuff folks, and it'd be, it'd be excellent if, if folks.
I would happily yield my spot in the batting roster.
So let's, let me just pause to consider whether or not that's permissible. We, you know, we modifications to our agenda are supposed to take place before we kick off our agenda. And then, which we did, and to then switch our agenda around midstream, I, I, I don't know. One, I don't know if it's legit. Two, I don't know if it matters right now, given the fact that I'm guessing anyone who is going to be here is here. Um, and other than the fact I would love for more members of the community to be interested in some of the other aspects of education, um, I, I guess there's no. There would be no reason, there'd be no ill effects from changing it again and making, uh, public comment right now. So I guess I'll, I'll own it if it's the bad choice to make, but I'm, I will entertain a motion to modify. To move public comment to right now.
Sure, and since it is five forty, most, which over for five thirty should be here by now.
I would think so.
If those people aren't here, I'd be more than happy to write something, accept it that way later.
Yeah, like I said, I'll, like, if it's bad, if the bad call, I'll own it, but I'm, I will accept a motion.
Well, I am the one that made the request.
That's okay, that's okay. I'm gonna, we'll say Cindy first, we'll say Jeff second, to, to make public comment happen right now. Any further discussion on that? Any, might have said that, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great, we're in public comment now. I will just say this about public comments, um, so taking another look at the, the public comment policy. It does specifically note that public comment is for residents, meaning residents of a town served by the E S D. Um, so I guess that, you know, I, as we've always done, as probably all of you have experienced, like, we allow the time for public comment to be made. I think the only restriction we're gonna put on that, just to be in keeping with the policy, is if you don't live in one of the towns served by the E S D. Public comment is not your opportunity, but if anyone else, please, so the floor is open and if anyone would like to make public comments. Mr. Normal Blank, sir.
And I'm, uh, I'm very happy that you said you own that decision. I think it was horrible decision that you made and thank you Superintendent for allowing us. We've been very sinister looking as the board, as of last month, we got prolonged, there's, you know, through a terrible technicality. You know, so people couldn't come and zoom, the opportunity was here. We were here. That should have been allowed as meetings in, in my government institution are warned, Zoom is an add-on. The billing is the meeting, right? You lucky to come there, you can get there. I want to speak loud enough so everybody hears me, especially folks at home. I think it was a horrible decision when you went to the second thing to move it. It's a very, very crooked seeming. Of warning and, and meeting and it's moving around on a, 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 uh, policy or a. Issue that is being very vocal by some and just usually more in favor of the pledge than against. But we keep having this discussion. So when it got moved, it, it seems very fifty. Now, again, I understand business, it was warned, we gotta move on, but the, the, what the motion should have been. Directly after whatever issue ended after five thirty, we would take a public comment in order to not rise and. That I will yield the floor, thank you.
Okay, so. I would, I'll take responsibility. No, that's, no, thank you. It's not necessary, Superintendent Payne. So just a bit of clarity, so.
I don't need any clarity, so I'm, I don't, I, I don't really respect that to have any clarity.
So I'll offer it for anyone who is unclear based on what the comments just made. The current law states that there does need to be a Zoom option warrant and maybe it exists, maybe it's not required for other governments. The current law states that there does need to be a Zoom option warrant, and maybe it exists, maybe it's not required for other governmental functions, it is required for this board and other school boards. So if a meeting is warned to have a Zoom option, and then that option is not present at the time we're supposed to have a meeting, we are not supposed to have a meeting. And it was hugely inconvenient for everyone, for everyone, for everyone who was there that time, for everyone who's here again tonight. So it's no good, but it happened, and it was the legal and right thing to do. So I'll put that up there. Also, and just, I'll just say this to refresh people's memory. This board has acted twice to say that the Pledge of Allegiance is going to happen in school prior to begin, when classes begin. That has been for a year now, that has been what's been in place. And I see people start shaking their heads, and they can certainly shake their heads. I do know that one of the arguments that has been made is not that it's pro pledge or anti pledge. It's pledge as per this board's directive, or pledge when other members of the staff want it to happen. Right, this has been a question of some employees not having it be the way they want to, and continuing to make an issue of, that has been the issue. So I offer that for some clarity, and the floor is open for any other public comment, please. Okay, yes, yeah, please.
I have a question.
Sure.
Sarah Beth Ward Bennington.
Thank you.
Um, so the pledge, is it's being said in every school right now?
No, it's not.
It's not.
So
So let me just, so in the the schools that is is being said at, is it over the loudspeaker?
So I I don't know the answer to to that. So and I I will also clarify, it's being said in each elementary school, this board only oversees the
Okay, the elementary schools, so you don't know if it's being said over the loudspeaker or not?
I don't.
So if a teacher decides they do not want to say the pledge in their classroom, none of the kids get to say it.
I don't know that that's true either.
Um, point of, is that true?
No, you're having a discussion.
Thank you, Sandy, you're at one hundred percent.
This is not on agenda.
Yeah, you are absolutely correct, Sandy, so so what Sandy's pointing out, one is that public comment is not public conversation necessarily. Um, the the chair has has taken some liberties from time to time to help clarify points, particularly as we discuss this topic again. Um. And I guess I'll leave it at that, because it's not warned, and it's not, it's not, uh, it's not public comment, and it's not warned as a topic for conversation, so thank you for that point, Sandy. Yes.
I just have, can I just finish, so like, two or three weeks ago, I went into one of the elementary schools. They were invited, the American Legion Auxiliary was invited in to do a um fold flagging, folding for the fourth graders. I I went. It was amazing, the kids were incredible, they had incredible questions that they asked, they were so respectful, they were so into this. I don't understand about the flag, like, why people are so afraid of the flag. There was two veterans that were there that folded the flag. At the end, one fourth grader got up, stood in front of one of the veterans, saluted him, the veterans started crying. Like, I don't understand what is the big deal about saying the Pledge of Allegiance, we grew up with it. My kids grew up with it, what is the big deal, and and I don't understand why it can't be said after school starts, like, after the bell rings or whatever. Like, that doesn't make any sense to me, you know, I subbed for a year during COVID at North Bennington School. The teachers have a lot to do in the morning, and I think somebody brought that up before. You have to sign the kids in attendance, you have to see who wants lunch, who wants breakfast, you know, where to put their folders, they can't get it all done before the bell rings, it's impossible. So I just think, let the teachers say it when they want to say it, it should be down over the loudspeaker, so that all the kids can say it, and not just certain kids.
Thank you.
That's what I have to say.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Um, Darlene Kong from Shasberry.
Hi.
And I'm just saying that I understood all schools were given direction to say the pledge, and I am concerned to hear that Shasberry Elementary School doesn't have that opportunity for all. That's my comment.
Thank you. Anyone else for a comment this evening? Yes, hello.
I'm the blank Peters, and I go back to the Shasberry School, we we keep coming here and and complaining about this, but you're not doing anything about it, yes, you know, and and that bothers me, you are you you are elected by us, you know, to do what we ask. You know, we've asked to have this done, but you're not overseeing it, when you tell us that you don't know if they're saying it, that you should be in that school to see that they are saying it, that's your job. You know, and and you should care, and if Shasberry's not doing it, then find out who isn't doing it and and address it, this has gone on way too long. They, do you know what our country is like right now? Everybody should be proud to get up and say this, the pledge, okay, we should be teaching our kids to be proud of where they live. And I don't feel you as a board that I'm electing is doing your job. Because we came here a week ago, sat here for a half an hour, came in, sat again, and no meeting, and then we come back today, and you still don't know what they're doing it. That's your answer, a few minutes ago, I don't know. That that is not an answer. That's all I have to say.
So point of clarity, it's not that we don't know that it's happening, the question was, is it happening over the loudspeaker, that was that was what my answer was to. Um, yes, ma'am, please.
So Kelly Carroll Bennington. Um, first of all, thank you for listening to us tonight. Uh, but I do have to say, I'm a little bit concerned, because I I listened to you talk about we, you know, rearranging the agenda and wanting public participation. And I come to these meetings, and I see public participation, but just in a one-way conversation. Um, I really honestly believe it's it's not just one or two personnel complaining about process and policies inconvenience. I think there's a lot of concern in the in the community on both sides. I personally support the Pledge of Allegiance, I think that um we need to start very, you know, young with our our youth on educating, um, especially on history, so that we can engage and embrace the strong parts and learn from the not-so-good parts, but I think that saying the Pledge of Allegiance has a lot to do with that. And I look around the room, and I see this, I see a lot of people, and I know a lot of people are very interested that couldn't be here tonight, because it keeps changing, and it is Thanksgiving weekend. So I just have one question for you. Specifically, what is it going to take to get the Pledge of Allegiance on as an agenda item for discussion? Because these people come out all the time, and these educators are concerned enough, and you're getting public participation, so what's it going to take to get it on the agenda?
Thank you. Hi, Cindy, you're not a member of the public.
Can I, I have clarification quickly. I'm a resident of Arlington, am I, does that mean I'm not?
So all of a sudden, I can't speak, even though I've been speaking for over a year, I come to every single one of these board meetings. You know I do.
I know.
No matter what, it's the biggest stuff, I come to every single one. And now all of a sudden, I can't speak?
So.
Where's this coming from, it's been over a year, I've spoken almost at every single one?
So so let me.
Sorry.
So no, no, so it's, so let me, so let me, again, take a point of privilege as the chicken. It was it was reviewing the public comment policy, which has been in the books forever, that I realize that that's public comment, as per policy, is designed for residents. Yes, you've been sometimes it's been as in your role as a union person, sometimes it's been as a as a teacher in the school. If if you wish to, if you wish to communicate with the board as a union person, there are contractual avenues for that to happen. If you wish to speak to the board as an employee, there are personnel policies that can help that. But in terms of speaking as a member of the public, the policy is very clear, and again, it's been that way forever, it was just my fault for not being as familiar with that particular detail as I should have been, that has allowed non-residents to participate in public comment.
It all just suits your purpose now, is why, correct.
Well, it's also in policy, Kevin. And again.
You're wishy-washy with a lot.
There are union ways, there there
Wishy-washy, I apologize.
Well, I think it's the same.
There are union tracks, and there are personnel policy avenues you can take for this.
We've had people from North Bennington, if they were here talking, we had to have them not talk, because they don't vote on
There's many people.
I know.
Yep, there you're absolutely, there were, there were many, many people who were here for public comment, and that was the error of the chair, to allow people who didn't live here to have the have the conversation.
Could somebody else here read what I was going to read then?
I I'm, I mean, you can ask anyone, you can ask any.
Read my speech, what I was going to read here, since I'm not allowed to anymore?
I will, yes. Go ahead, you got, you got your glasses on, I don't. What if I could?
Thank you. This whole thing?
Yeah, it's the, it's just the first page, I have all the speeches from every single time I spoke in here, so just this page.
Okay. The Pledge of Allegiance literally takes only thirteen seconds to say so no academic time is being used, if a classroom chooses to to participate in this practice. This is also the time it would take to put this on the agenda to discuss. We need to allow all students this opportunity, and this cannot happen with the way this practice is worded right now, before classes begin. Due to the fact that not all students are in school before classes begin, I am asking the wording of this practice be changed to not during academics. This cannot happen unless the practice of the pledge gets put on the agenda for the next meeting. It is obvious by the attendance of the board meetings for the last two months that this is a topic that needs to be further discussed. Just to give everyone an idea of how much this topic is, still needs to be discussed, recently, a banner showed up hanging in the back of Shasberry's resident yard that faces the Shasberry School playground. The banner states, I pledge allegiance to the flag on it. When the students first saw this, they ran and stopped, and with a hand over their heart, about eight students stood there with no prompting at all, and said the Pledge of Allegiance all on their own. The board's chair statement during the last meeting about not hearing anything about this topic, except for Mrs. Kenyon and I, was incorrect. The board has received at least six emails this summer, during the months of June and July, about the practice of the Pledge of Allegiance. All six were Shasberry teachers, and five of the six were Shasberry community members, and had children go through Shasberry, Shasberry Elementary School. All of these emails were asked for the wording of the practice to be changed, so all Shasberry students had the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance if they choose to. I also know that more emails have been to the board in the last month, for and against the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance, which again should tell the board chair that this topic needs to be on the agenda for the next meeting. During the last board meeting, a Shasberry resident brought up the atmosphere change at Shasberry School, and he is accurate. Shasberry is still an amazing community, and Shasberry Elementary School is still a wonderful place to learn, but there is tension in the air, since Mrs. Kenyon and I were told by our administrators that we are not allowed to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to read that again, the administrator told them they were not allowed to say the Pledge of Allegiance. This tension is not just among a few staff, but many, this is not the type of atmosphere that keeps amazing teachers in a school district. Again, during a past board meeting, it was stated by Sandy Foster that this practice can be revisited if need be, while it's time and the practice of the Pledge of Allegiance need to be added to the agenda.
Anyone else for a comment? Very.
So these teachers that work in the school system where this is going on are not allowed to speak, I understand what you said, but I'm having a hard time.
Again, in in
I'm having a hard time the best.
That's so, I mean, I would say the clarity's been offered once, and because it was the privilege of the chair to even do that, we'll leave it at that. Um, correct, yes, please.
Well, once again, going back to, I I wasn't on the board in April when this room was filled, I was here as a resident of Shasberry, I'm on the board now, representing Shasberry. I have numerous people come to me about the Pledge of Allegiance thing, the post office, the store, um about walking my dog, whatever, um, people call me. They really want to see this back on the agenda, and it was set in the April meeting, and that's kind of what I think everybody felt comfortable with, and was said that we would revisit it, if there was an issue. Clearly, there's an issue, you can talk to, you can walk around the block in Shasberry, and any resident out there will stop you and talk to you about this, it's causing disconcern in the whole hood. And um, you know, some people are for it, some people are against it, but the wording needs to be changed. And as a board, you know, we were told that it would be revisited if there was an issue, we've been back here I don't know how many months now, the Pledge of Allegiance continues to come up, I think we need to, it needs to get on the agenda. We need to clarify it, so that everybody's comfortable with it. And let's move forward, and you're right, you said one other time yourself, we spent a lot of time on the Pledge of Allegiance, we have. But we're at the point now where it's time for it to be on the agenda. We owe it to our community, to our teachers, and to everybody to clarify what's going on with our Pledge of Allegiance.
Make the motion to put it on and it's for gene.
I'll second it. So let's so this first and second, so we have to add on it. Well, except if it's, if the if the motion is made, the if the motion is made out of order in the first place, then it's not a matter of acting on the motion. Um, in that, the agenda is not set by vote of the board, it's not, and to make a motion to change that too. Well, that, like, that is a Robert's Rules of Order thing, that guy, good, okay. So again, if we're using Robert's Rules of Order from the Giddyup, it's improper, we need to order to say we're not if we are no longer using Robert's Rules of Order, here, here's the issue, here's the issue with this. Corinne, you said it yourself, and this has to be the last bit, because it's not warned, and we should not be discussing it. Corinne, you said we need to find a solution that makes everyone happy, and that is, that solution does not exist.
No.
That solution does not exist. So um, we need to move on with our agenda, please.
Oh, wait a minute. You said it's not on the agenda, so we can't discuss it.
Yes.
And I'm asking for to be on the agenda, so we can discuss it.
Right.
You know, these people don't need to be coming back, back, and back, and back.
You want to clarify that you want that on next month's agenda?
Yes, next month's agenda.
I I I hear, right, but the but the motion is out of order in itself, because Robert's Rules of Order does not provide for the agenda to be set by vote of the board.
Who sets it?
The chair does.
That's the issue, bylaws.
Okay.
That's the same problem we just ran into before. So moving on to um Superintendent's report, which is the first agenda, the first item under section eight is student services presentation, which I believe brings us to Dr. Abbott's.
Can I just want a clarification, I'm sorry. The resident who read the statement to the record, your name again, please?
Sarah.
Sarah, and and you are a resident of what town?
Bennington.
May I follow up with you in the next couple of days?
That's all, okay.
Can I just say one thing?
One thing briefly, please.
Okay, it's brief. I I have to address this to you, okay, because you've seen totally against this, and and not helping to support people in this community that want to see this set. Obviously, I don't know if you were in the military or not, this is a big issue. And and our country needs this right now. And and you at every meeting seem to stall this, for some reason, I don't know, because you can put it on the agenda, and you choose not to, and I want any answer from you, why? What is your reason that you don't want to to settle this?
Actually, I'd like the superintendent's notion of asking for for follow-up at the end, because this isn't born, because I we should not be getting into this, but I would be happy to address, to have that conversation, I'd be happy to.
Um, post-meeting?
Post-meeting, yeah, not not during the meeting, because it's not proper given what we have posted on the agenda. If you'd like to hang out until the end, if you'd like to leave me your phone number, however you'd like to do that, but I would very much enjoy having that conversation. Um, okay, so third time's the charm, we'll move to the student services presentation, which is quite important, because it actually affects the well-being of our students and the education they receive, and how they're going to do in the long run, it'd be great if folks stuck around.
All right, is my screen sharing working okay?
It is, thank you, Dr. Abbott.
Okay, wonderful.
Bye, folks, have a nice Thanksgiving, thank you very much.
All right, so tonight, um, I have a presentation on Act seventy-three. Um, in particular, um, the state of special education delivery in Vermont, and how
Can you, hey, wait one moment, please?
Sorry, there were just people, people leaving, and I didn't want us to miss any of it, uh, it's really important, and I wish folks would stick around, they're choosing not to. I guess that's their decision.
All right, so let me do the proper introduction.
Thank you.
Um, Dr. Kate Abbott, remote, uh, I appreciate her being available this evening for the reschedule. Some of you have seen this, so I apologize, but um she is here to speak about a state, uh, the Vermont Agency of Education's report of the state of special uh, the Vermont Agency of Education's report of the state of special education. This is her first presentation in a series of two, as she and I have also been working with another person to do a audit of the SVSU, and we will be bringing that report back to this board in the future. So, Dr. Kate Abbott, thank you for being with us this evening.
Yes, thanks for having me. So, um, this report really covers Act Seventy-Three from the perspective of special education. And, um, like Superintendent Payne shared, this is a state report of the state of the state, not the state of Bennington, it's the state of Vermont and how special education is delivered. Um, so we're gonna hear a little bit about an overview um, of Act Seventy-Three, and specifically, one of the first actions of Act Seventy-Three was a legislative report from the Agency of Education on the state of delivery of special education. And that is all of the content for tonight. So we'll hear a little bit about the current landscape of education and special education in Vermont, and then considerations and next steps. So what is Act Seventy-Three? Um, you've heard a lot about Act Seventy-Three, and some aspects of the bill are highlighted in the news. Um, in particular, Act Seventy-Three also addresses special education in terms of how programs are delivered, what's currently offered, um, and how programs are financed. So the very, one of the very first, um, components of the bill included a report requested by the Agency of Education about what the current state of services and delivery of those services and cost for those services were in the state of Vermont compared to other states around the country. So Act Seventy-Three and Special Education. Throughout the process of Act Seventy-Three becoming law, it's clear that the legislature is very concerned about the rising cost of special education over time. A special education report outlining the factors contributing to growth and extraordinary special education reimbursement costs um, was delivered on September twenty-sixth. So this report addresses the drivers of the extraordinary expenditures in special education. Extraordinary costs in special education are defined by the Agency of Education as a threshold for any individual student's educational programming that costs more than sixty-five thousand dollars. Um, actually, with inflation, it's closer to sixty-seven thousand this year, and I'm sure Renee can give us the exact dollar amount. But, um, when we're talking about extraordinary costs, the definition of that is when one child's program costs more than, um, sixty-seven thousand dollars. For example, the majority of those, um, of those situations are for students that are placed out of our district because they incur not just out-of-district tuition costs, they also incur special education transportation costs um, and specialized, uh, services and programs. So this is really for children that have complex needs. Across the state of Vermont, the educational landscape, um, shows that we have a reduced, a declining total student population. So that blue line on the chart is our total enrollment over the course of, since twenty-eighteen till now. And, but you'll see that red line, that is our student, our percentage of students in the state of Vermont that have disabilities. So while our total population is declining over time, the, the rates or proportion of the students that have disabilities is actually increasing. In this slide, you'll see some of the more complex types of disabilities that we serve, including autism, emotional disturbance, and other health impairment. These three categories are primarily the drivers for, um, extraordinary costs because these types of disabilities are very complex to meet. So, um, you'll see in this green line here on top, uh, other health impairment um, and emotional disturbance have had a slight in, uh, increase. Actually, other health impairment hasn't really changed tremendously. However, the, um, the rate at which Vermont identifies children as having an other health impairment is significantly higher than other states. And autism rates have increased by thirty-three percent since, um, twenty-eighteen, nineteen school year till twenty-twenty-five. And that's not just a Vermont, um, situation, that's across the country. Autism rates are increasing. So in this report, the Agency of Education has taken a look at how Vermont compares to similarly situated states in the nation, and they've selected Wyoming and North Dakota as two similar demographics with similar population numbers, as well as comparing, um, Vermont to the nation in, um, how we deliver and how we identify different disabilities and deliver services for those. So this chart talks a little bit about, uh, the first category, which is children that have emotional disturbance. And you'll see compared to, um, our other, uh, similar states that have similar populations, Wyoming and North Dakota, Vermont identifies a much higher rate of children comparatively to those other states. So two thousand, over two thousand children in Vermont compared to just under six hundred in Wyoming and a thousand in North Dakota. However, if you look at the next line, it talks about how we provide and deliver services to learners with emotional disturbance in Vermont. And for the majority of our learners, sixty-two percent, we deliver education in the general education setting, eighty percent or more of the school day. And when you look at the national percentage, we're actually, Vermont does a better job, including our learners with disabilities in the general education setting. But down below, you'll notice, um, there's two other types of settings that we deliver services in. Um, a separate class for part of the day or a separate class for the majority of the day that is taught by a special education teacher, and/or a separate school. So the separate school is where we're incurring, you know, children have to leave their home community and travel on a bus to another town or another state to receive education. Vermont's rate of, um, providing education in separate schools for children that have emotional disturbances is nineteen point six percent, which is much higher than the national percentage, which is ten percent, and other similarly situated states such as Wyoming and North Dakota at four percent or less than two percent. So you can see that separate school, um, environment is used more often in Vermont than in other similarly situated states. When we look at autism, uh, our rates of autism, like I said, have increased over the past five years as they have in other, um, across the country. And our rates, uh, of autism are pretty similar to other similarly sized states. So Vermont and Wyoming and North Dakota have similar rates of identification of, um, autism. When we look at inside, services provided inside this regular educational environment, eighty percent or more of the school day, Vermont is very inclusive. Again, we serve, um, over sixty-three percent of our students with autism in general education settings compared to the national rate of forty percent or the state rates of Wyoming or North Dakota of just about fifty-one percent. So we are very inclusive. However, the same trend holds true with, um, children with autism compared to children with emotional disturbance. Um, Vermont places children in separate schools outside their home community at higher rates than the national average in similarly situated states. So nine percent in Vermont compared to five and a half or five point eight percent in the nation, and, um, under two percent in similarly, similar demographic states. So, um, in summary, um, this finding basically states that, um, we wonder, the, the report summarizes that Vermont has a lot of inclusion, and then we often have a lot of, um, out-of-district placements in private or separate schools. And the question was raised, do we have enough resources and a continuum of services to provide those services in the child's homeschool and make sure they're served well in their home communities? And that's the question raised by the report. And secondarily, if we expand that, um, continuum of services, there will be a cost containment measure because when you place children outside their home community, you incur the cost of transportation and tuition, and our transportation costs, especially here, can be a significant, uh, significant portion of that cost. So talking about the cost of special education in the report, um, the agency discusses how the total cost of education has increased over time. The driver of the cost increases in special education is the cost associated with educating students in separate schools. Um, essentially, that extraordinary cost that over sixty-seven thousand dollars is the vast majority of the percentage of increase that we've seen. So while the total, um, special education annual growth for the total amount of all special education costs is only about eight and a half percent, the increases in extraordinary costs are upwards of, are almost eighteen percent, and that's been year over year. So that extraordinary cost is driving the total cost of, um, increases in special education across the state. Another financial implication in this, uh, report from the Agency of Education relates to Medicaid billing. Um, Medicaid reinvestment funds in our district total around, um, last fiscal year we had, or this fiscal year, we have eighty, eight hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars of Medicaid reinvestment funds that we use towards, um, really critical services such as hearing and vision screenings, mental health services, behavioral services for children. Um, and what we have read in this report, and what is happening right now is that there's going to be a pretty significant change in how Medicaid is billed, how we access those funds, as well as there will be a change in how those funds are allocated. So, um, we aren't sure how the allocation is going to change, um, at this point, but they are considering a redistribution of the funds, and they're definitely moving to what's called electronic health records billing, and we're seeing some of those changes right now. Um, we received an email this week that we have to manually enter almost eight hundred individual codes in order to build down Medicaid, um, funds. So we're working through that now, and there will be a new electronic system that the state is, um, identifying at this point, and that system will be used, uh, as supposedly by July first to change how we bill Medicaid. We'll also be billing, um, five oh four plans as part of this change, which will be a new practice for our district. So there are a lot of changes in store, and, um, to prepare for this, the new, uh, changes in store with the, with this legislation, we are conducting an internal audit with Dr. Megan Roy to currently, to audit how we deliver special education supports and services in southwest Vermont with an eye for positioning ourselves well for navigating the changes in store for the state. Um, so we are, um, attending, uh, all opportunities from AOE to learn more about how this, uh, Act Seventy-Three is rolling out, and, uh, we will keep the board in the loop as we learn, um, about what these changes will look like. That's all I have for today. Thank you.
Dr. Abbott, a couple of quick questions. Can you say more, please, about what the move to electronic health records billing? What will that mean in practice, please?
So it's going to be a time sampling, uh, methodology, and, um, the, the trickiest thing to start with will be moving a district of our size, because we do rely on, it's three, it's over three-quarters of a million dollars of Medicaid, um, reinvestment funds that we use for our budgetary processes each year to deliver direct services to kiddos. So when we talk about that shift, we don't, the state has identified what software they're gonna use for the electronic health records billing, and it's going to be different than what we currently use. So to take, uh, a system of our size and move it to a completely new technology in the span of less than six months, um, it will be a challenge um, that we'll have to address, and we aren't sure exactly what it's gonna look like. So, yeah, we'll know more when, uh, we know it'll be time sampling based, but we aren't sure beyond that.
So we'll add it to the, the growing list of things that we're not quite sure what they're gonna look like in a few years? Okay, yep, all right.
And one question, too, Kate. Is it gonna follow the same as, like, I know Medicaid right now is like, information? Um, visit verification, are we gonna follow the same thing in the district? Because in the public, we have to do that, it's like point of service.
Um, that's probably, I don't think any. Yeah, that's a great question. I don't think there's gonna be any fewer requirements. I think it's going to be different.
More.
But as we get, because we'll still need, um, scripts, we'll still need Medicaid consent to bill Medicaid, we'll still need to have documentation of our IP processes and five or processes. But you raise a great question, and, uh, as soon as we see it in real life, we will, uh, we will share what that looks like with you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Abbott?
Give him my quick one, and I neglected to ask this the other night. Do you see any ceilings being put on costs?
Do I see any ceilings? I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Ceilings, you know, like you, right now, you're billing eighty-five dollars for something. You see them knocking it to sixty-five and saying that's all you're getting.
So the way the state works the extraordinary costs is everything over the sixty-seven thousand dollars that one individual child's, um, education costs, they give us extraordinary reimbursement aid, where they give us ninety-five percent back of the cost of that educational placement over the sixty-seven thousand. So there's, uh, what this bill kind of entails is that by changing cost structure and how they reimburse us, that's one component of the bill about how to have districts change how they approach, um, delivery of service. So, yeah.
Perfect, great answer, and thank you.
At one of our other meetings, um, we talked about how you were going to share with us how our district compared with the state totals. And I'm wondering if you believe that, or, and please don't, I'm not asking for an answer now, but if you could look into, is our, uh, are the numbers increasing because we have better screening or earlier screening? Is it because we now have pre-K three and four where before, maybe we didn't include those younger students? Um, and then how many children graduate, move forward, come out of, um, five oh four or an IEP? And if you're not asking me to answer, I just, you know, to give me that, but if you could share, when you, um, share with us how our EUD is doing compared to state.
So Kate, our, our plan is to come back in January and talk about the, and we can answer, I, we've previewed the report.
You did.
We can, we can answer that question. I would just ask that we make sure we have it in a presentation format so folks can see it. And we have a request from the board to share that in advance so folks can have their questions, so we can, we're working on that as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Abbott? Great, thank you, Dr. Abbott.
Thank you so much.
Superintendent Payne, uh, still your show.
Easiest item of the evening, Beth Lord, interim assistant superintendent, is with us this evening. Uh, started the year as principal at Powell, continues to, uh, support the school moving forward. Uh, I can do the bio really quickly. She's been at Powell for a couple of years. Prior to that, she was in Texas for, as a principal, assistant principal and teacher. But she is a native of the area. She's a proud graduate of Williams College and Drury High School in North Adams where she grew up. So I am so very thankful for the board's support and having her in place. She's been a huge help just a few weeks on the job, so thank you to Dr.
I can't get you on the screen.
Good.
And then, uh, our FY twenty-seven budget review, which is still under the superintendent's report.
And I have brought Renee Gordon, and I have handouts for folks. Uh, folks who've worked with this in the past, uh, I am gonna take full responsibility for the likeness of the handout. Uh, all of the documentation is still available for those of you who like to dive, dive deep into line by line. Um, there should be leftovers, too, for audience members. For, I, I asked Renee because I've sat in budget meetings for over ten years. Um, I thought would be helpful since this is your first glance.
Oh, yes.
Is that you have a page, your first page is by department, so it allows you to see your entire, entire grand total in one page. I know folks have seen more detail, and like I said, we provide that as well. The second is an executive summary by Renee that kind of points you in the direction of like, hey, these are your drivers of either costs going up or going down, if that helps folks kind of get to the points in the budget they want to see. And then the last pages are, uh, FTEs that would be impacted under this, uh, board's direction for the ESD. So I will stop talking because that's the depth of my knowledge at this point, and I will let Renee walk you through her presentation.
Okay, thank you. Um, so as some of you who sit on the SU board already have heard me say, we know that we have our collective bargaining agreements that are currently, um, being negotiated. So our biggest cost drivers, as you all are aware, are our staff, right? So salaries and benefits. So salaries and benefits have a lot to kind of point out tonight about salaries and benefits lines here. Because there's a lot going on, and these are your your biggest cost drivers. So we do have a factor built in for potential salary grid adjustments. But there is a lot of additional going on here as well. So that's my thought tonight. It might be good for you folks to just get a quick look at this before we have all of the information coming out from the state in the next coming weeks, probably. We do have some grant funding that is supporting F T Es. A number of which are in the elementary schools. That grant funding is expiring June thirtieth. So the administrators of those buildings with those staff have asked that the board consider including them. So this draft that you have front of you does include you F T Es. So these are identified on this on the second page under the budget highlights. But they include a licensed clinical social worker at Ben El. A behavior coach also at Ben El. A behavior coach at Molly. And a math coach in Powell. So all of these currently are funded right now through Title One School Improvement Grants. We have had schools and comprehensive supports. This is year three of a three-year grant cycle. We do not know if any of these schools will be identified again for comprehensive supports. I have pushed on the A O E a little bit to see if they could do their data reviews. And let us know if that's the case, because if there is going to be a continuation of these funds, we wouldn't have to put them into local like local budgets right now. The answer that I got back is they probably won't have that work done until January, which is probably going to be almost too late for us to make any adjustments. So that being said, those four F T Es have been included in this draft. The math coach in Powell is actually budget neutral, however, because there was a vacant classroom teacher that has been carried in the budget. Based on the way things are looking for student counts next year, that classroom teacher won't be needed. So we've basically repurposed that to become the the math coach or math teacher in Powell. Couple of other asks not related to grant funds, a math teacher at Monument. So that one point O has been included in this budget draft. The current library media specialist that we have serving at Monument is also at a point five. It was in the budget at a point four, so the request was to keep that position at a point five. I did note today that we didn't actually quite have everything right with that position. So technically, this draft budget you have before you is about forty thousand dollars short. But we can make that up, you know, and I'll I'll get it corrected when we look at this again next month. And then there was one other ask to have a clinician in Powell for two days a week, so I have included a point four F T E for that. So those are the changes with the F T Es. Now, as part of that, many of these administrators did give up some contracted service funding that they had for mental health. That can come to a cost of about sixty two thousand dollars. So I have pulled those funds out to help kind of offset what the asks were for in adding the F T Es. Couple of other things to note, our health insurance rates have been proposed by V I, the Vermont Education Health Initiative. Those are currently with the Department of Federal Federal Regulation. And hopefully, we will know if they are going to improve those rates or not, but for the first time in the last couple of years, there are only single digit increase in health insurance premiums. So we're carrying that in the budget right now at eight percent. Got an email just a couple hours ago that V I has also submitted dental insurance rates, which for us have been flat for the last several years. This year it's between zero and fifteen percent, and they will notify us next week. They will notify S U's and S D's next week as to who's been targeted for what increases. So the budget that you have before you right now has dentals flat, but we could be looking at an uptick of up to fifteen percent. Those, a couple of other things to mention here. So those salaries and benefits, the contracted services I had mentioned. We were carving out sixty two thousand dollars of that for those mental health services to kind of offset the F T Es. There were a couple of other lines that haven't been used or in or have been repurposed, so we shuffled those around. And Holly is really trying to level fund as much as she can with her contracted services and operations budget. So you can see that's contributing to the slight declines on those next two lines. The transportation line, this is really just funding field trips and our after-school transportation. So what's happening now with our Twenty First Century Grant? All of the costs are being incurred at the S U level, but we have matching funds required. So the money that's here does essentially pay the bill that's that's being incurred. So the S U is fronting the money. And then we're recouping, basically billing the district to to recoup those funds. So while you're not actually seeing the expense in that line, because I'm I'm billing for our staff as well, it's coming out of several different lines. The actual cost is going to appear and does appear in in F Y twenty five in the operations line. The tuition line is just a reclassification of district tuition. We've pulled that out of the Student Services Budget in the S U, put it in here based on student eligibility. Minor tweaks to supplies and equipment. The equipment line with the fifty thousand dollars there, Holly is looking to look at some fuel efficient and or just energy efficient vehicles to basically get our maintenance staff around from building to building, from campus to campus. If there's a, you know, a service call right now, they're they're driving the big dump trucks, which are not necessarily fuel efficient pickup truck, dump truck. So she'd like to look at something that's much more economical as instead of driving those big vehicles. So that's that was the ask there. Assessments, I just have that thrown in a flat five percent increase right now, just starting to look at assessments through the the S U lens. Hopefully that will come down, but they don't have those numbers refined just yet. Debt service, this is just our aging or amortization schedule on the bond. So our our interest payment is coming down slightly for next year. And on the contingency line, we did reduce that, if you recall, this current year. To basically try to save some dollars. I bumped that back up to where we had been budgeting it at the two ten. And then the transfer line. Given that we have quite a bit of money in the reserve accounts, I did not put that hundred and thirty thousand dollars back in. So on the second page, I listed all of our reserve account balances. And what we had been doing for not not this current year, but previous years. We were putting a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in the S V U V S D Capital Reserve Account. But we did pull that out of this year's budget, so we will not have that line increased by a hundred and thirty. Nor do I have it in at least at this point for for next year. And yeah, just with the uncertainty of Act seventy three, what are our districts going to look like? We have all these funds sitting there now. If we're going to be combined with other districts, do we want to start considering spending these down before we end up in a in a much larger entity? And then the F T Es, I tried to just identify what the requests are that have a budgetary impact. So that's what the shading represents. And then at the bottom, the local paras, as you know, I have labeled there as S V S U. So these technically are S V S U employees. However, they are directly assessed to the Union Elementary District. Because they are serving within your schools. So sorry to rush, but I had to try to keep it concise as much as I could and have it easier.
Are there questions?
One. Question. For the proposed budget increases for health and dental, does that going to affect in twenty six or for twenty seven?
It will be July one of twenty six, so it will be this.
So what's hard, and I think, you know, from, you know, as a spouse or somebody who works in a school district, is your open enrollment is before we actually work this rate, it increases up. So like, if I have a benefit at work, my wife has a benefit. Or somebody is in district, you can't compare that to that. It's my benefits. We know they are. But we're still unsure what the rate increases are. Which, how do you do open enrollment in December? You don't know.
Our our open enrollment is actually in May.
In May. So so these would go on effects during June.
It'll be July one. Open enrollment happens in May for enrollment changes as of July one. Then when the rates go into a
Like, you know, I just think like myself, like, you know, so it's just like, you know, they don't line up with what we're being asked to do as.
Our deductibles don't line up. Those don't count, for sure.
I know, I know what my rates are in my work. For next year, except for I just got them, so they're set.
We we will know in a few weeks what S D F R actually goes on.
Open enrollment starts for me, they're close in two weeks.
Okay. I had one little contrast item. You you sprinkled some good news in S V S U and that you're able to transfer some some employees out of full retirement back to beamers. Is there any sort of case of that happening here for the?
All of all of the grant stuff happens at the S U level. So we don't, we don't see that. I mean, you will see some of it in the whole assessment. So the shift that we shifts that we've proposed at the S U level of pulling some of those early education staff out of title and into local, you'll end up seeing that in your assessment for the education.
Basically a hard no. Which is life.
So town assessments are also happening for property. I know for Powell, I think they're supposed to be done by
Lines from Shasbury.
So I'm wondering the impact on these new assessments, or maybe you saw no impact or a decrease.
Yeah, I don't think you'll see anything until twenty, I think it's twenty six, twenty seven, because they have to all Shasbury, then North Shasbury already, and that's it.
So you'll actually see that in the common level of appraisal, but it's going to be in lag, right? So the common level of appraisal letters that we will be getting, they usually they come out mid to late December. It will have been on property valuation and sales data from the prior year, so it's always a year in lag. But yes, at all of our towns within our union here are well below market value. So our C L A's are very, very low. The legislature did introduce a statewide adjustment to kind of bring that up, hoping, you know, to kind of minim minimize the impact of what C L A is, but it factors in in the equation above, so technically factors out too, so it really doesn't have any impact, but that's just.
Renee's referencing the worksheet she built for me to explain why there's two factors in the formula, basically to cancel each other out.
And also, there's a, this math teacher at Monument is a new math teacher. We have some schools that don't have a math teacher. Is that just the administration just didn't feel it was necessary?
So I think where you're seeing those are where those schools may have had supports previously supported through grants. And as those grant funds are, you know, being stretched thinner and the student populations are shifting. Some of the more needy schools are still getting those supports as that's where the resources have to be directed. Monument, they're seeing great impact with the little bit of math support that they're getting through title right now. She wants to continue that trajectory, so that's why she asked for that F T E.
So Director Gordon, what next steps do you anticipate and what do you need from the board?
If there's any direction, if you would like to give me what you would like to see next time around. Otherwise, it'll be pretty much the same budget, just with additional information. We will have the December first letter coming out from the Tax Commissioner, which will have the recommendation of what the property homestead property yield is, that'll really be the factor as to what's going to happen with our projected tax rates. We did get our first pass at long-term weighted average daily membership yesterday. As we know, enrollment's going down, so our numbers are going down. Which is also going to cost, make our, you know, tax rates go up. So not a lot of things working in our favor. So I guess, you know, it just ends up what the board's comfortable with. And then, of course, hopefully the next draft will have a better idea as to what we're looking at for the S U assessment, so I can refine that line.
So we can anticipate that at our next meeting, which is like two weeks from tonight, to have, we'll have the December first information in there, we'll have, we'll have the other information just described. So I would suggest we take a look at that in two weeks, and then we figure out what our next steps are from there. To the to the December first letter, hopefully you all check your V S B A emails, but the V S B A is running a webinar on the night, December ninth, about make some sense of the December first letter. So we, as board members, we all get those V S B A emails, so you can register there. But if you want me to forward it to you, I'm happy to do that, too. I'll I'll be tuning in. It's it's a long time meeting, so I'll be tuning in. And hopefully it will help me make sense of the December first letter. Great. Anything else for Director Gordon?
Thank you, Renee.
Okay, so that brings us to the chair report. The the first thing we need to do under the chair report is, so Cassie Barbo, who was the district clerk, has retired. She's she's down south now. The recommendation is that we appoint Kayla Thompson as the clerk. I presume we're all aware of it, if anyone is is waiting at home, we have Jeff as our board clerk, but that's different than the district clerk. You know, Jeff's role as clerk is to write thank you notes and to do things like that. The role of the district clerk is far more is 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 far more in-depth, requires a whole lot more than what we could ever reasonably ask Jeff to do. And really requires the infrastructure of someone like a town clerk to to do that kind of work. So I would entertain a motion that we appoint Kayla Thompson as the district clerk, please.
I'll make that motion.
I'll start it. First and second, any discussion about appointing Kayla Thompson as our district clerk?
With Kayla to get my re-up nomination forms and signatures the other day. She's lovely. She is on top of everything. What she doesn't know, she'll tell you she doesn't know, and she'll get back to you. And, excuse me. It was a really nice experience, and I think she's going to do great work and hopefully keep her for twenty years or so.
Yeah, I I would expect, you know, she's been working under Cassie for, since Tim retired, so I think this is, this is going to be great. I think it'll work well for our, for the town of Benex and for our district as well. So excellent. We haven't taken a vote. Yeah, any any further discussion on that? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of appointing Kayla Thompson as the district clerk, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? And that carries. So congratulations, Kayla. I just wanted to draw your attention to some other documents related to Act seventy three. You know, one of the biggest probable impacts from seventy three is the redistricting. And in the board, so the there was a task force assigned, a redistricting task task force that was assigned and charged with generating recommendations for how the state of Vermont wants to be redistricted. And I think to maybe just about everyone's surprise, the report was essentially, no, we're not gonna. So there is no recommendation for redistricting from the task force.
It took him one hundred and twenty-five pages to say that.
Took one hundred and twenty, yeah. So the the full one hundred and sixty-eight page report is in the board packet, as well as a two-page summary is also in the packet. I say it with with a chuckle. I have no idea what those deliberations were like. I know they are all professionals. They took the charge seriously, but particularly to read the Vermont, the V T Digger article was, the following day was pretty funny. But the fact remains, the the legislation requires a final report to be issued by December first. So by the next time we come around, again, I have no idea what that final report is going to look like from the redistricting task force. I presume it will look an awful lot like the draft that was issued a week and a half ago, but I I guess we'll see. But so I just wanted to draw your attention to those two documents for sure. Another aspect of Act seventy three, though, is minimum class sizes, which I think is, it's separate from the redistricting. And it's it's really going to come to bear here at the E S D, because we have Woodford Elementary School. The the as per this new law, the minimum class, there's no minimum class size for kindergarten. The the mid, as per this new law, the minimum class, there's no minimum class size for kindergarten. First grade, the minimum class size is ten first grade students. And for second through sixth grades, the minimum class size is twelve students per grade level. And right now, Woodford School comes nowhere near that. I think there are twenty-three students total at Woodford School right now. So. The way that the legislation is written is says that if a school fails to meet minimum class sizes for three consecutive years. Then the AOE can step in and do a number of things to include shut down schools and take over schools. As well as to like extra, add extra resource to a school. For those of us who have read the. NESDAQ reports about best educational use of our buildings, it talks about demographic information for Woodford. And one of the, one of the most striking numbers in that report was that the birth rate in Woodford has gone down seventy-five percent in the last decades, ten years. So I don't know what extra resources could potentially be offered to Woodford that would bolster up those class size numbers. So I do think that's a thing that this board is going to have to figure out what it's going to look like in in the years to come. Again, we have a little bit, we have some time to play with. You know, and one thing that is clear in Act seventy-three is that there's a recognition that we, that everybody does need some transition time to figure these things out. I think that's a really, that's a very real thing that this board needs to figure out is. What the fate of those Woodford students is going to look like. I would add. Woodford Elementary School is three point four miles from the next closest elementary school. So I don't even know that there's a. An argument to be made that it is a rural school or it's a remote school. Which which there are carve-outs in seventy-three for those two types of schools.
No, there was a, you know, a conversation at the SC level about what to do, possibly repurposing the building. You know, maybe making it one of those centers of excellence where we bring. If we have the opportunity to bus kids in for, you know, intensive math services, intensive, you know, SEL. You know, you name the curriculum that you can put in there, you know, behavioral school. And other options. One thing that I did mention is that, you know, that if. You don't operate it as a school in some form, the town gets to take it back and that's an. An unfortunate situation for an SU that has put a lot of money, time, money. Time, money. You know, into such a, you know, facility in keeping, you know, the things that. You know, Holly's done to that building has brought it into the twenty-first century. You know, so like, we'd have to really hopefully sit around and empower a good solution for them.
Yeah, yeah, I think the only thing we.
Numbers, they speak for themselves. And with the six people of child bereagination have moved into what's in the past.
However, you're you're forgetting that there are areas that are close by that could also shift. I mean, that's redistricting, redistricting.
I think that we should not be playing darts.
That's right.
Think everything is going to change on every level that we know it.
Yep. I think the only thing we know for certain with regard to Woodford is that it's not going to look like, if three years from now, it's not going to look like it looks right now.
Yeah, no, that I get. Perspective, I don't even can. Right, right, exactly. You know, I I I'm not, it's not from a lack of want or, you know, looking for solutions and things like that. It's this. We may be the victim of Mandy.
Yep, yeah, and I'm reminded of like Act forty-six, like there were lots of folks when Act forty-six was being put into place. Six or seven, even eight years ago, maybe at this point. A lot of people like, a lot of people arguing like, they're not going to do it. They're not going to do it. And of course, they're going to do it. Like, this is what, this is what the law is. This is what the legislation says. So we need to, you know, be prepared for what gets handed down to us.
And we are operating another building that is not. In a typical fashion that right now, that does not have that mandatory classes.
Oh, we, right, yeah. And I, yeah, and I don't, again, I don't know how how programs like Beach Street and Congress would be, would be considered within the context of seventy-three. Because I don't, you know, I think they're designed to be short-term interventions as opposed to class, schools as the, you know. But anyway, I I just, I wanted to bring that up only because I know that folks are busy. I know that folks don't always get a chance to to wade into. The information that comes to us from the VSBA or what's coming out of the AOE, but like, that is a major thing that we can see is coming. And and like we just said, what we know for sure is that it's not going to look like it looks right now. So, sense of the chairs, I I will, I will also say this as part of the chair report. I I have no desire to keep any member of this board in the dark as to why I'm reluctant to bring the pledge back as an agenda item. We, what we can't do is talk about it in open session without it being warned. There's no reason to talk about an executive session. It doesn't fulfill any of those criteria. What I would be absolutely willing to do. Is have one-on-one or small group conversations with members of the board, small group meaning fewer than four of them. Right? So we can legally have a conversation to explain my rationale. Why I don't think it's a good idea for us to bring it back up. I have no desire to keep any of you in the dark on any of this. So please let me know if you'd like to do that, to include right after this meeting. We're already here, so I'm happy to hang out and have a conversation with fewer than four of you. So. Turning back to our agenda, that brings to the chairs report, we have FYI, so we have.
I did one FYI.
Sure.
Uh, because Glenn brought it up. Just an FYI, you know, we have three seats open up this year. It's a Bennington, a Woodford and a panel.
Yes.
So if people are interested in those seats, they go to the town clerk office in Bennington and get the forms.
Excellent, yep.
She's appointed.
Oh.
So that's one year appointment. So she'd have to rerun. So if you're appointed, you get one year seat. You don't get all three years. So, like I said.
I think so. I think that's what he said.
Yeah, because you're appointed versus.
Yeah, I'll drive you around.
Yeah. So, so it is one Bennington seat, one Woodford seat, one panel seat are the ones that are, look like they're expiring this year.
Yep.
People are more than half their run.
That's a great point. Thank you for bringing that up. With budget status report, student enrollment numbers, which reflect the, pardon me, among other things, the Woodford numbers. And then the the FY twenty-seven financial internal controls document, which I'm looking for in the board packet, because I answered it. There it is. Okay, thank you. Yeah, number three on the list. There we go. Great. So that then brings us to the added agenda item, which is executive session. Glenn, could you please repeat? Because I didn't have a pen in hand at the time. What subsection are you citing?
Proposing VSA three-one-three A, given it deals with personnel, both the. You know, employee and board.
I'm just pulling it up just so I can take a look at it while we talk.
We like to invite superintendent and a super assistant superintendent and then. Interim assistant superintendent.
So I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm just now pulling up. So say it again, what subsection the motion was for?
Three wooden, three A.
Okay, so which, which subsection under three-one-three A did you want to name specifically? So we have three, so three, three-one-three A describes the existence of executive session. But then there are specific points below that allow us to that we're governed what we can talk about.
So you're saying subsection A one?
So.
It's under there. It's a little tiny thing.
I can't read this.
So I'm going to, can I come over here and show you the statute right here? And then there are more, more descriptions down below.
Terrific. So grievances of the tax. Who is bringing the grievance?
I'm bringing the grievance. Other than tax returns.
Okay.
So. Typically, this grievance typically is reserved for and utilized for. Union grievances or labor grievances.
Thanksgiving.
Is there, right, because you, we can. So a grievance, a union grievance would place the public body where the person added disadvantage, right, to bring that up in the poll.
Correct.
Is there, is the grievance you have in mind, either you or this body?
A this body.
It's going to put, okay, it has the potential to. Okay, so specifically, this is three-one-three A subsection one D. Thank you. Was that what your motion was?
That was in where it intended to be.
Okay, okay, great. So, and who did you want to invite it?
Uh, everyone, including superintendent and Norman.
Okay, so Renee will spare you.
I'm gonna, yeah, I'm just working on the Zoom controls.
Oh, okay. Is there any, do you anticipate any action to be taken?
I do not.
Okay, so.
I think it's a matter of you just. You can get it out there.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion, then, please to move into executive session. As per one VSA three thirteen subsection A one D.
I make the motion.
Thank you, Cindy. We have a second, please. Our second, thank you, Jack. First, second, any discussions? And also to invite those people that Glenn said. Any discussion on moving into executive session? Hearing not all those in favor in moving to executive session as described, please signify by saying aye.